Good evening, folks. I'd like to call and order the City Council Work Session, City of Flugerville, 6 PM. We have a couple of items on the agenda, some exciting news. First item is 2A, Discussion Regarding Energizing the Core, a Downtown Flugerville Study. I like that. Let's energize.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are excited to continue our conversation about downtown, this time not related to, directly to Downtown East. As you all know, that, that project is coming out of the ground and we know that from Council's perspective and the communities that we've heard, that it's important not to forget about the historic core of our downtown. And so, over the last several months, with the help of our consultant team, Hyatt Brown, Jen Boss and Mark Gilbert, as well as Molly Alexander and Dale Austin with Sunland Group, they've helped us to articulate a downtown study to help us look at the properties that we own and other ways that we can re-energize the downtown core. So with that, I'll pass it over to Mark.
Jen, why don't you give us an intro?
Yeah, yeah, just, just a little bit of table setting before we dive into all of the details. And first off, big thank you for the opportunity to continue to work with you all and to look at a different part of downtown. We respect your desire to preserve, but also enhance the existing assets that you have while envisioning something bigger for the future and taking downtown to that next level. We also recognize that Downtown East is a driving force for the historic downtown, in part because it will create new momentum in the area, but also when City Hall is vacated, have a reduction in foot traffic. And so, it is a critical time to be thinking through what happens in, gosh, only a year now, before Downtown East is done, it's incredible, but in, in a year, what's going to happen? And what investments can be made today to ensure that downtown continues to, to grow and to flourish? And so, we took that task seriously. Emily mentioned the members of the team, and just by way of background, we have expertise in real estate development, urban planning, retail, downtown retail strategy, as well as architect or cost estimation, all with an idea of putting together a strategy that is going to be actionable for you all, both in the short, moderate, and longer term. And when we say longer term, we're not talking 30 years or 20 years, this is more of a six to 10-year timeframe, that, that's long-term. And it's important to note that our work was not built in a vacuum. We recognize that you all have made significant investments already in the downtown action strategy, in your streetscape plan, in your utility plan, and even in consistent public feedback that you get, not only related to Downtown East, but also with the historic Main Street and what people wanted to see there. And so, all of that fed in and, and helped to inform this strategy. So as I recommended, or as I suggested, we are offering today actionable recommendations with an incremental approach. And if there are three messages that, or three themes that you will hear throughout, you'll, you'll notice a focus on existing plans and the importance of your envisioned investments as a significant foundation in realizing the strategies that we'll talk about. Market forces, and specifically that market forces today really don't support immediate redevelopment of sites that are developable today, or that might be in a year or two, such as, as the city facilities on, on East and West Main Street. And finally, the idea of leveraging what you have. That's going to be a critical component in what we're suggesting. Keeping existing facilities, building off of the investments that you've made on Pecan, and preparing for the time when redevelopment is ripe, and maintaining the momentum that you've started in Downtown East, bridging that gap, and, and creating a very exciting place on Historic Main Street. And so, those are some of the themes that, that we want to focus on today. Mark's going to walk you through the, the details, and then we're all available to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jen. So just to take you through a little bit of what our, our scope was, we've actually been working on this, I want to say for 11 months, so I am so deep in the weeds, I'm going to do my best to stay chronological and on-target here. But first thing we did was coalesce around project goals for this study, and that was very much based on existing council direction, the community input we received, and all those planning documents that Jen alluded to, the downtown action plan, streetscape plan, utility analysis. And then, we went, the next step was to evaluate conditions of downtown. We were simultaneously looking at the downtown core and the city's downtown facilities, and we were focusing on those project goals. We were building on those physical conditions, we developed a market analysis and retail assessment, and we did that using industry data sources, as well as in-person stakeholder interviews. That helped us gain insights into trends, rental rates, service gaps, and other current issues. The next step was analyzing the results of all of those condition assessments to identify key opportunities and challenges facing downtown Flugerville. What was the potential role of city-owned properties in addressing them? This required property valuations to understand site value, reuse potential of the city properties, as well as identification of strategic sites that could play a catalytic role in downtown activation. And then finally, that brought us to our recommendations, which is synthesizing those findings, and the focus, as Jen again mentioned, was near-term, midterm, and long-term through this incremental intervention approach. And that includes broader public works investments, as well as individual property enhancements.
Mark, can you level set for the public and give your definition or the boundaries of downtown?
Absolutely. So, we were primarily looking at your historic core, largely bounded on the east by Railroad Avenue, on the south by Pecan, and then I would say the west by North Second Street, and then I believe it's Willbarger on, on the northern section of Historic Downtown.
Excellent. When you say bounded by Pecan, do you include the properties on the south side of Pecan?
We do, yeah. It's a loose boundary.
So more, more Hall Street to the south, since one of these properties is south of Pecan?
That's right, that's right. And as mentioned, coalescing around project goals, these were the project goals that we came up with, that downtown should continue to develop into a vibrant and distinct destination within both Flugerville and the greater region, that the downtown should be a nexus of both historic and emerging Flugerville districts, providing amenities and services not found elsewhere, that the efforts should ensure existing businesses can thrive and benefit from increased activity and desirability. Downtown will become more recognizable and branded, where visitors know they have arrived downtown, that these efforts will focus on making it easier to access by car, walking, biking, and simply getting around between businesses and other destinations. And then, with leveraging public assets, ensuring that the city-owned properties that will become surplus in the future are leveraged to boost activity, identity, and overall district success. One too far there. So, the physical conditions, this was where we were really looking at the downtown from a urban design environment and its functionality and potential to support retail, office, and other businesses. Some of the key findings that we really want to highlight are that sidewalks, crosswalks, and related safety improvements are still needed to enable more foot traffic that can support downtown business. There's a lot of surface parking available, but wayfinding and signage would help visitors better utilize the spaces. It's a very eclectic mix of styles from the past 120 years downtown, and that would benefit from weaving together the diversity through district branding efforts, including signage, consistent styling and design of public infrastructure, so think lights, benches, canopies. And finally, that many people, especially outside of Flugerville, don't know where downtown is located, and frankly, may not know downtown exists. And investments in those gateways, banners, public art, signage, wayfinding would be a significant benefit.
I noticed you've got bike racks on there as a priority item. Do you know how many bicyclists we have in Flugerville? Do you have any data on that?
Yeah.
That's a no? Okay.
I'm one of them.
Go ahead.
I'm one, I'm riding my bike.
Yeah, please.
So from a retail perspective, I'm the retail person here, your retailers are really asking for some bike infrastructure because their customers and their children are coming that way, and they felt that that was really a needed infrastructure to support their business as well.
Doug saved me from having to go home and get money for a light bulb when I was riding my bike, and I did not know where I was going to park my bike in front of, Home Depot?
It was Home Depot?
Yeah, Home Depot.
Although, in talking to some cyclists, realized that Flugerville is so safe that maybe they aren't worried about locking up their bikes.
Good point.
Now, individual businesses could choose to put their own bike racks in front of their locations on their own.
Correct. There's also the distributions, there might be space or not space, and I won't get in the weeds and take away, but I, I think that it's something that you can begin to uncover as you get into the more specifics, kind of going forward in the implementation strategy.
Is that something, is that something where we'd be looking for like a license agreement for public use, so that they could put the bike racks, you know, on the sidewalk or on city property as opposed to on their own property?
I think that goes into implementation. Where is, where do they need it? Who wants it? What are the impediments? How can you do public-private exchanges, license agreements, and/or on their own property? I think it's a combination of really coalescing an opportunity to bring people together, to say, "We can help," or "The city can help." It's, it's kind of bringing the needs together there.
And we, and we know there's a lot of fair skepticism about bicycling as like a major mode of transportation, but you have wonderful recreation trails, and there's an opportunity to stop your, stop on your route and get a coffee or get a beer, and that's something we, of course, want to, from out.
We, we have six bicycles and five people in my house, so I, I understand that there are bicycles. I don't see people in bicycles. We have a lot of pedestrians, and I'm walking on the trails or, or riding on the trails. I see lots of people walking all over Flugerville. I see people driving. I don't see anybody on a bicycle.
Not even on the trails?
What?
Not on the trails?
Occasionally?
Almost never.
Really? You're not on the right trail.
Yeah. You're on the bicycle.
But you're not on the right trails.
But like on Lake Flugerville, you, you never see that?
Almost never.
I, I had someone tell me-
We might all go to different places, so it could be place dependent.
I had someone tell me just, just last night that they ride their bicycle from, I'm going to say near 685 in Wells Branch, all the way to the Growler Bar, using our trails. I know there are people on our trails. And turning through some parking lots.
Anecdotally, I believe there definitely are people using the trails. The, the question is, what's the data on how many?
Yeah.
I saw one of the most interesting things, I sent this, I sent a picture of this to Serena when I was in Victoria, Canada.
So beautiful.
Oh, it's gorgeous, isn't it? And along the trails, there was a signpost that digitally counted the number of cyclists that rode past.
Yep.
So maybe, maybe there is a way we can collect some of that data.
Well, I think we can, because every cyclist has a cellphone, we can-
There is that too. Anyone traveling eight miles an hour faster on the trails.
We could assume that's a bicycle.
Right, well, we can, we, what's the, the software that's used to say how many people go to an event or party?
Yeah, yeah. Placere.
Okay, I was thinking Pacer, but that didn't sound right.
Placer.
So we'll, we'll jump into the facility conditions, Doc.
It's like, we don't really care what y'all have to say, keep going.
And you didn't want to get in the weeds.
Fair enough. So we, we talked a little bit about downtown and, and, you know, urban design and infrastructure, but we also looked at your downtown, three owned facilities, and those are highlighted here for members of the public to just know, yeah, that's the City Hall at 100 East Main Street, all suites 100 through 500, the 100 West Main Street Building, which is Planning and Development Services, originally designed as a bank, and then a recent purchase on, at 105 East Pecan Street, an interesting retail opportunity in the future that the city has taken advantage of. So, the first being 100 West Main, this building is in general good condition, but as you can imagine, as a bank building, adaptive reuse would require some exterior investments, which would be needed to activate outdoor space and invite visitors into the building. 100 East Main is similarly in good condition, there's limited maintenance needs, but again, its unique design from the seventies requires some exterior investments for activation along Main Street. The buildings in the back, especially Suite 500, is in great condition and very little maintenance needs, and it's, it would be a great opportunity for office professional services reuse. And then the historic building at 105 East Pecan is a unique business opportunity, but it may require some more substantial exterior investments and code updates, particularly depending on if the, the future use is, is food and beverage or, or more traditional So just to summarize what we did next, looking at market conditions, after reviewing everything thus far, we looked into current market conditions in North Austin Metro. The goal was just to understand performance of different real estate sectors, and that's to help inform what would make the most financial sense for the site, for each of the sites, and property reuse in the future. And what that uncovered was just that current rental rates for commercial uses do not support new construction at this time of these parcels or, or several other parcels downtown, as construction debt cannot be serviced by rents. So this led us to our recommendation of a phased approach, using adaptive reuse of your existing built environment to foster more activation and demand, and in turn, higher rents in the future. We did a best practices and case studies report as part of this, looking at a lot of suburban and mid-sized cities downtowns, nine specific ones, and, and we could readily categorize the lessons learned from those successful downtown activation efforts into three categories. The first is nurture, that's embracing, acknowledging, and promoting what you already have, and not, not assuming it's a blank slate. The second is enhance, incremental improvements and interventions, including capital infrastructure improvements, wayfinding, branding campaign, innovative and creative uses of vacant buildings, temporary uses, and especially activation through events and public space programming. And then finally, attract, that's lighting the spark, right? That's providing the tools to attract new investment, and that can be everything from economic development grants to incentivized zoning, and, and in key opportunities, providing a public subsidy as well. And Flugerville is in many ways doing all of these things, though there are opportunities to do more nurture, for example, greater downtown business cooperation and coordination. There's opportunities for enhance by executing some of the really great CIP projects you have on the books, and to attract by facilitating the development process where infill development and new construction is most desired. We did a deep dive into retail with local retailers in the downtown, that was led by Molly at ITP, and that provided a more detailed assessment of the retail conditions downtown. We looked at retail opportunities, such as the clustering of food, entertainment, and personal services. We also identified key challenges, including, as mentioned, the visibility of parts of downtown, pedestrian infrastructure improvement needs, and the limited coordination among downtown businesses to provoke the district's activation. We also used this assessment and stakeholder input received to inform potential reuse opportunities for those city-owned facilities. And then finally, we also identified the key nodes downtown, particularly near Railroad in Maine, First in Maine, and First in Pecan, where the city should stay very alert to redevelopment opportunities, not necessarily through direct acquisition, but perhaps incentives in an effort to build retail continuity. There's numerous infill development opportunities near those nodes that can help fill the gaps and improve pedestrian comfort and continuous shopping experience.
Can you tell me more about, under opportunities, what youth-oriented businesses actually means?
So either youth-focused or youth-oriented, so with your ISDs, with so many youth in the community who are really looking for outlets and opportunities, there's, I think there's a big range here. So it could be anything from outdoor recreation, I mean, I think about the cluster around ISD, and you think about ULI and the competition-
Yes.
-and how these kids go through from a very young age, from dance to poetry to soccer to football, but most of the, the retail to support that isn't in Flugerville. So I think there's some direct opportunity there to grow that kind of cluster, but also for activities for kids.
Perfect. I love all of that. I'm trying to contain myself. The other question is, how would we be able to collaborate or incorporate the Monarch, which would be our recreation center, which will also have retail inside and space for all of those things, for it to go together in some way?
I think that's the future opportunity of beginning, as we look at clusters, we're not just looking at businesses in the downtown, but we're the clusters in the community that we can leverage, and so, who's providing what, and how can we connect those?
Make sure you include the library.
Oh, absolutely. Library, recreation center, and then parks and trail system.
Molly, I'm curious now, retail for youth. How do you define that? Because I can think of a broad range, so I can think, for example, I think Doug and I were the ones having-
I'm thinking like arcades?
Yeah, yeah, arcades.
I'm dating myself then.
But, but, but we're also having that major, that major, that major arcade slash outsourced baseball facility that's going to be right next to Cowboy Fit that's coming in. I can also think of, okay, D-Bats, for example. Well, okay, that's a, that is a private entity that's offering, you know, services to the youth for baseball services. I, I'm just trying to better ascertain what you mean by retail, because it, it can range. I mean, a comic book store, I mean, like, like, I'm curious to know what the definition of retail for youth is.
Okay, so retail's a broad category, it includes restaurant, beverage, food and beverage, retail shopping, as well as entertainment. And so, within all of that, there is a real need for family-friendly entertainment and food and beverage options in the community.
Okay.
There's also the opportunity of young, you know, under tweens, you know, need for, what do we, what are the kinds of activities in our retail that is attractive to younger or their parents, and the needs of connecting the two? You have tweens, so then you get into that teenage year, and then you have more adult children. You know, a lot of kids right now, the way I understand it from the Flugerville community that I met with, you know, Spring Hill, is it Spring Hill the-
Stonehill.
Stonehill, thank you. Sorry, Spring Hill's a retreat center.
And it is a neighborhood here.
And an elementary school.
And so, a lot of, a lot of the families and parents that I talk to will oftentimes drop their teenagers there, and that's where they go and recreate. And, and really, this idea of connecting this amazing parks and trail system, the recreation of the community, what's happening in Downtown East with downtown, how can we really knit together some of the missing pieces to create experiences as our kids evolve and grow in this community, so that they don't have to leave?
So I won't take you down a rabbit hole, but I have to ask you, since I'm fifty-something years old, like, what do the kids even want?
Well, I think that it's, you know, two things are an opportunity, is what do they want, what will the market bear, and where the needs are?
Yeah, how will you find out?
Who's going to start the business? So it's a big question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in real quick here, Molly, because it is a question that we were all curious about, like, what, and so, we took the opportunity during the strategic plan, and most recently with the Youth Advisory Council, to ask them that question.
Yeah.
And it, it ranged from things from like having a kiddie cafe to being able to go thrifting, and that's where like, they, thrifting, and then-
Roller skating.
Roller skating was a big one, and so, so they were very-
We have had the same roller skating rink in the Austin area for the last 35 years.
Right here, right here, our Youth Advisory Council member is here, and so, that, that we heard repeatedly, were, were those kind of unique opportunities that they find in other communities that we don't have in downtown? And so, we, we have made a list that they have provided to us. Those are, those are ones we heard repeated though, from that group.
So to Kim's point, I remember years ago, we talked about an opportunity of having an, an, an ice rink, which, you know, folks have actually utilized, they can, you can have it year-round in the area, which I was really shocked to even think that you can have that, because that would attract some adults, because apparently, there's a lot of people who play hockey, I had no idea, adults who play hockey here are looking for facilities, and a lot of youth who are interested in that too as well. I remember when the Dallas Stars came to DFW, it was a big deal, inline skating, that was a huge deal from us. But it would be a distinguishing figure from the rest of the region outside of Cedar Park with the actual Dallas Stars, to have that from there. For tweens, I have, and it's the reason why I ask, because I have a tween and I have a teenager and I'm an adult, and the tween, I mean, she gets off, she wants to go to Alta-
Right.
-and five and below, and check out what the heck is going on over there as well.
Of course.
The teenager thinks she's too cool for Stonehill. So let's go other places from there as well. Man, I mean, Domain or something else, walk around, or go to the movies, or go, you know, honestly, on the trails, you know, there's some of these other areas outside of that. And it's, it's just an interesting conversation to have about how you bring that in, and then how do you anchor that with that, because I think Kim's, we're at a point with the Monarch, because I think that having that space, you know, we're, we're not only, but we're having all these pickleball courts out there too as well, that's going to allow for a more synergistic aspect for folks who are going to naturally, organically go from there. When they went to the Music in the Park, and they got to- When they went to the music in the park and they got to play some games with whoever, I guess we had that 90s band that was playing at the time, they enjoyed going and playing the games. Tweens, the games they had around it from the other facilities. So I think you're going to bring that, that's going to be an anchor that's going to bring people to that area organically, which I guess you can go ahead and lever off.
Well, I think we're seeing trends around the country and I won't take too much more time, but I just came back from New Orleans. And one of the things we see, you know, thrifting is huge, you know, this generation really wants to reuse, recycle. Thrifting all the way from, you know, what you think of dumpster diving inside the Goodwill like big thing, all the way up to the dandy, the idea of really the high-end designer clothing, designer pieces. So we're seeing all of it. Well, in New Orleans, in the ninth ward, one of the most successful things after Katrina has been a thrift store that on certain weeknights moves everything out and it's a roller skating rink for the community. So this idea of combinations of, you know, it's not this one place, but it's this evolution of spaces that we can use. Retailers are realizing that's really where many independent retailers are headed, to test waters, to build concepts and also build something for the community.
Interesting.
Say that my 19-year-old's like gotten all dressed up to go to Goodwill last night.
Yeah, that's right.
And I'm in awe about it. I mean, I like Goodwill, but that's her thing. She'd rather go to Goodwill than, and she goes to that blue one where they ring the bell. It gives me anxiety, the Blue Barrel one.
That's, my grandson does it too. He's in college.
But anyway.
My kid accidentally went there and was overwhelmed.
All right, I'm going to get us back to.
Or was your credit card overwhelmed?
Thank you.
So thanks for that conversation. We also spent some time, it's kind of the last part of our analysis, on valuation of your properties. You know, we looked at it several different ways, but in the end, we thought, knowing that you're going to have at least interim use of these properties, perhaps very long-term use of the East Pecan Street property, you should have a benchmark idea of what a break-even amount of rent is for an investment. So we've provided 10- and 20-year break-even investments and are more or less recommending the 10-year break-even investment as a benchmark for future negotiations with a tenant on either improvements and renovations that the city is willing to do upfront, or alternatively a tenant allowance to allow them to do it how they best see fit. But you have some numbers just to benchmark. There may be very good policy reasons to go above these numbers if you're very excited about an opportunity. But we thought it was important for you all to understand what those were for starting negotiations.
So Mark, are you saying because of how flushed out Suite 500 is, that's why you broke it out as its own as compared to Suites 100 through 400?
Yeah, we, absolutely. And frankly, Suite 100 and 200 are very much their own as well, this kind of retail activation of Main Street. 300 and 400, just because it's split between the two stories, might only work for a single tenant. And then 500, I mean, is certainly ready to go for a lot of users. And that just, all that analysis we did got us to this roadmap of where we want to be in the future. So the first part, planning for connection, that's executing a strategy, building interest in downtown. I think this report, as well as all the city's existing efforts, are largely the completion and execution of this. The second phase is, you know, for the next two years, right? That coincides with related city investments, such as the completion of the new City Hall and Rec Center, as well as the extension of Main Street. So that's well underway. Third phase being the strategic plan for the next three to five years, which we call building momentum. And the fourth phase, the anticipated to start in that six-to-10-year horizon, where project goals have been met and downtown's potential has been reached. And we kind of dive into those more specifically for each of the kind of phases of those three horizons. In that one-to-two-year horizon here, we're talking about backfilling the vacant city-owned facility at East Pecan Street and getting ready to reoccupy the Main Street properties once those are vacated into the new City Hall. Gathering developer input to structure leases and terms that serve both the city and the tenant. We're talking about acquiring strategically located sites or influencing those sites in a way that will support downtown activation.
Which is not atypical from what we've already done previously.
A hundred percent.
Besides East Pecan, what, so it was 100 West Main and 105 East Pecan, those are the two properties that we've acquired. But is there more than that?
So you're operating for administrative uses in both 100 East Main and 100 West Main?
Sorry, West Main.
And then you have a strategic acquisition on Pecan Street at 105 East Pecan.
I'm still trying to understand the strategy in that acquisition, if you're.
So the thought process is that. The thought process is that if in fact you're looking at trying to go ahead and revitalize the area, own the pieces on the chessboard and what pieces are made available that you can go and leverage and utilize to, for better assets moving forward on that. I think that that's been an interesting aspect when it came to, because when did we do the bank? How long ago was that?
Three, four years ago.
That's it?
Yeah.
Dang. I thought you were going to say seven or eight.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that was an interesting investment. Marsh, I did not think that would be a good investment and ultimately that turned out to be a very good investment from that aspect. I know that having that land where the barber shop was, that's another interesting part that I guess we'll decide and we're sitting on moving forward. And then I think Wardism has had its spot over there. So it's all around these specific areas and we know for a fact, because we've been doing a lot of, what do we call those? I'll think of it. A lot of small businesses have been asked to be rezoned in and around those specific areas too as well, which tells us that there is a momentum to do something in those specific areas. Now, what does that look like? I mean, luckily we're the government, so like we don't have to do anything rash. We can wait and see about those and see what those assets are. But I have a feeling, to your point, they're about to be more activated because of what's happening in downtown east, which will lead to a domino effect regarding the specific current area.
But that's right, but it's still not secure enough on its own to be completely hands-off in our recommendation. We don't necessarily recommend government ownership of a bunch of properties for business, but you are at a critical point in your historic downtown that needs a little bit of a push.
Help me understand what you've got here under teneting, city facilities, RFI, RFP. I would almost think, and I don't know if RFQ, you know, we're getting through the alphabet here, but. So that's putting an item on the street saying, hey, we've got this property available. We'd like you to lease it. What would you do with it?
It's a mix of things and we think it's best to leave it up to the development community to tell you what they're interested in. A request for information might be much more broad, like, is anyone interested in this site? What do you think you might do with it? Are there any critical investments from the city of Flugerville that you would need? Where you start to build those key terms before you start negotiating?
I think the challenge I have with these, and I'll expose my contrarian ways here, is that I'm not a fan of the city being a landlord in these scenarios. So why would I not go out and say, hey, what would you do with this property? We'll either offer you a great deal on it or we'll sell it to you and invest in infrastructure surrounding it. And you can make a go of something really amazing in this location. Why would we not approach that first and foremost? Because I really don't like the idea of being a landlord.
Sure. So, and Jen, jump in if you like as well. The request for proposal does not have to end any way differently than anyone putting up a for-sale sign in their front window. It's just the reason you would do it this way is, one, because you're a governmental entity and two, because you're not necessarily just looking for the highest bidder. You may want to put other considerations into your decision of who to lease or sell the property to based on their intentions. And the fact that you want them to have the best intentions for your downtown, not necessarily just their own business.
Because I heard nothing that you said that, you're right. Like, you're, I mean, exactly. You're like, hey, wait a minute, I have this out here. What are you going to do with it? Cool, we'll work with you on that and get it done. I don't think that stops us if we didn't, particularly in, I think, an RFI.
I think my challenge is I'm seeing ROIs that don't necessarily match my initial investment. I've had issues being a landlord already. I want us to turn these properties into something, but I want us to turn these properties into something.
And we see it as a short-term investment during this critical period while you're trying to build that excitement or the energy that was on the title slide as a way to help guide development in the direction that you'd like to see. Given, you know, freewheeling desires from the development community, you may not get exactly what you'd like to see downtown or something that's not complimentary to what's happening further to the east. And so for this short-term, the say six-year period, while you're looking for private development to take place on privately-owned parcels that appear to be development-ready today, but for market conditions, you're trying to help guide the market in a certain direction. And when that begins to happen, then absolutely, what you'll see is that we fully agree that having a redevelopment of those city-owned parcels in the not-too-distant future makes a whole lot of sense and not being a landlord and having a development partner do that. But right now, you have a unique opportunity to help guide the framing of historic downtown. And if you give up right now the control you have over those properties, you lose that ability.
And there's some, well, from our perspective, there's some responsibility too. Because you're taking a lot of employees out of downtown into the downtown east and you certainly don't want to see that part of your city suffer. So being very thoughtful about ensuring that it doesn't happen.
I had more questions related to what Doug was talking about on phase three, so I'll wait until then.
Okay, no problem. I'll jump through this. So we have some great renderings from Sunland Group, just kind of showing and highlighting where those key investments are at each phase, this being in the next two years. Again, you're doing some of this already. It's underway with the Main Street East extension. We do feel very strongly about the importance of your Main and Railroad and your Main and Pecan intersection improvements. And of course, those streetscape improvements that are going to make it safe and comfortable to cross Pecan Street and to cross all the other streets as well.
I have a question, I guess maybe more towards Emily or Steph, on the Main Street and Railroad. Are we looking at that as?
A roundabout?
I was like, what is the roundabout versus, because I know it's very close to the light and we're doing roundabouts in a lot of ways, but the lights can greatly delay traffic, especially if there's between those two intersections.
Yeah, the initial extension from Railroad to 685 does not include a roundabout, though. As we're evaluating Pecan and 685, Pecan and Railroad, that certainly could be a future option.
You capture a little bit of that Pecan and Railroad, that's a conceptual roundabout. And then we're showing as well significant sidewalk improvements along Pecan Street in that first phase. Jumping into the second phase, that's that two-to-six-year timeframe. Now we'd feel the next two most important streets to really focus on and the businesses along them are Main Street and North First Street. During this phase, you're teneting or selling or whatever you all decide to do based on those negotiations. But getting occupied the spaces at East Main and West Main, that may include renovations done by the city or it may include renovations done by the future tenants and lessors. It may include, and then more placemaking as well and just really activating that whole downtown area through gateway development and additional downtown signage. Rendered here are the Main Street and North First Street critical improvements, again, the same pedestrian infrastructure. At this point, you're seeing the potential renovation of West and East Main Street properties and the opportunity that we see in that front parking lot at 100 West Main to be an active outdoor plaza, potential outdoor space activation of private sites if desirable by the landlord and potentially strategic acquisitions.
Okay, I did have a question. I was like, who owns that one with all the blue shades and who's doing that?
So that, yeah, that would not, you would not have any role in that other than, you know, speaking to the, speaking to that landowner and seeing if they had any interest in using a underutilized surface parking lot for an activity. It's just showing the potential.
It's a Princess Craft building. It's owned by a restaurateur out of San Marcos.
Are we still talking about that building? After all these years?
So your two buildings on Main Street perhaps don't, they don't perhaps initially give you the idea of active retail, but I think these are just helpful images to show how, you know, glazing and changes to these exteriors can create the type of environment we would expect to see on a Main Street.
What's the definition of glazing?
That's, okay, so the kind of floor-to-ceiling windows where you can see and, yeah. Yeah, breaking through wall.
You don't think it'd be worthwhile to deconstruct the drive-through area?
I think it's an opportunity, but we love shade in Texas too, and that's an opportunity to sit outside. I mean, that could also be an outdoor part of the CrossFit gym where you're pushing tires. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of opportunities with old drive-throughs, just like old gas stations. But I think the person who has to pay the rent should probably make that decision, yeah. The final third phase, this realizing potential phase. And that's where we're waiting for the market conditions to turn to the point where the rents fetched by office and retail use are cash flowing enough.
Consequently, why you said six to 10. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And that's the point at which, you know, it's going to be feasible for developers pro formas to say, let's knock this down and build three, four-story mixed use to take advantage of the demand for your downtown.
So in your own estimate, and you're the SMEs, you do this for a living. We often hear from developers who are telling us, you know, what's going on with the commercial market, which may not necessarily be what we like to hear. But you're finding it to be congruent with your own analysis if you're giving us a six-to-10-year window, which would allow for a rebuilding and rebound in that specific area and then giving what's happening, what is the synergy that's going to be happening in that area to better utilize and affect some of the real estate values and buildings that we'd like to see in this area.
Yeah. I don't know if I'd feel confident saying six or 10, but the range is very reasonable.
Okay.
And the idea here is that you're both capturing any kind of natural shifts that happen in the market while simultaneously creating more demand by increased activation at downtown east and then moving further west from that location.
This is also the opportunity, we think, to continue looking into your streetscape master plan and utility plans to now build on what's a very strong core out to areas further to the east and west that have also been prioritized as downtown investments, whether that's underground infrastructure or sidewalk expansions and things of that nature.
Could you share with Steph, you don't need to do it here, but with how you came to those computations regarding that projection? So we can have a fair identification. Because I find that interesting that, that's an interesting timeframe, but it's not dissimilar from what we've heard before. So it's just for us to better understand that.
I think Jen answered my question about whether this is solely an economic situation right now or, you know, if it's the downtown east is then also going to bring in new excitement. So it's both?
It's both.
Thank you.
And then finally, we just have, yeah, some rendering of potential future mixed-use development replacing what's at 100 East and West Main Street. The potential to get more creative with some of your interstitial spaces now that you've made the really critical Main Avenue improvements, such as the alleyway behind historic Main Street. That's the exciting phase we're all working toward.
So that's conceptual, but where would you put parking?
So that's a good point. There's surface parking and obviously structured would be a lot less expensive than underground. So probably be some combination of podium and structured parking if you're realizing these buildings.
Some things going on, there's no more outdoor space over there on First and Main on the south side that you have there. So I don't know what.
So those, and you'll see at the Hanover's site too, it's this generic concept that the rents have now perhaps tripled for retail and other uses and now private developers are choosing to redevelop their sites. And we're not highlighting them because it doesn't really have council's role. Perhaps it's more limited to incentives and zoning mechanisms. But at that point in time, in that timeframe, perhaps they would be ready for redevelopment.
So you brought up an interesting point, which is what I was thinking about is, so is this going to then price out our current downtown businesses out of the area?
Yeah, go ahead, please. So at your current rent structure and rate, so low rents mean low sales. It's a direct correlation. The higher the rent, it should correlate with higher sales. And the disparate aspect of downtown where you've got the Merc or bookstore or the pottery place in very different drive-up locations and not walkable limits their ability to grow sales. But if you begin to think about how you knit these investments together with some of the streetscape pieces. the streetscape pieces with your properties in terms of teni- teneting them intentionally to support that activity and support more and more foot traffic and more as destination, like I'm not just coming to get my haircut, I'm coming also to do these six or seven other things. You will begin to kind of, it's rising tides float all boats. So the opportunity here is we've layered these recommendations and implementation strategy over the ten years because it will take that time, but also that opportunity to say, if we do this, this, these pieces will help build foot traffic, help bring in new independent local businesses as well as others. And you begin to, to stitch it together. Like if, if you own the domain, you, you're really one decision-making team. And when you have this many different property owners, but you all have such an opportunity with your critical investments to help pull that together to act more like a community development opportunity, you will, those, most retailers want their rent to grow because their sales are going skyrocketing. They don't want their rent to grow when the sales are not there. And I'm a retailer as well, so it's, it is a fine line. It's a very fine line. It's a great question.
Well, you, um, hit on another issue that I didn't have a chance to, to talk about on the challenges, where it's a business coordination. And so I had just, uh, you know, questions about, um, what it, what it, what do you see as the challenge of the business coordination with the current businesses in downtown?
They're all independently working to run their business and, and try to do the best they can, but there's little coordination among them. Several of them made friends through the first Saturday event with, um, the collective, um, the Pecan Collective, and they all see that as really helpful to their business. Um, they see sales triple on those Saturdays. And so that's one way that they connect and they connect with the community. But beyond that, there's no really convening today of them where we have an agenda, we're working towards several goals. And mostly retailers know other retailers, so if we want to bring great tenants into the spaces, we need to work with them. And some of them have told us that they want to expand or they're ready to move to a second concept. So I think it's really important to have, continue to have those conversations in a way that's structured. Otherwise, it's difficult for people to come to a meeting without understanding why.
Could that be like a subset of the Chamber of Commerce that could facilitate something like that?
I think that's dependent upon the community.
Maybe a downtown Flugerville Alliance.
Downtown Association?
I, I think it's just.
I thought, I thought we did have.
That's why, that's why, that's why, that's why some of us said. It's amazing how old ideas become new ideas.
Well, I think. I guess you see what happens when something, you know, fades away and that there really is a need to, to maybe revitalize that.
It's the same thing that we hear with the, um, uh, regarding all the neighborhood associations.
Yes, Fakona.
Fakona, yeah.
Where I met Doug.
And, and people, people are like, hey, if only we had an association with all the neighborhood associations involved. And we're like, yeah, we did have that for a while, so.
I actually talked about that today.
We had a few slides as well, just about some recommended investments by timeframe, near-term, midterm, long-term, but we did want to just jump to kind of what matters today and, and get to, uh, staff's recommendation.
Yeah, so, um, as we look forward, because as you know, we don't like to just do a studies, we like to act upon it. So, uh, some recommendations that we have include, uh, issuing that request for information to see what, uh, what's, uh, the city-owned spaces could become, as well as prioritizing Pecan Street and Railroad Avenue improvements as we look forward to possible future bonds, prioritizing those streets for improvements. Secondarily then, uh, prioritizing Main Street and North First Street. Um, expanding current placemaking efforts, which include our investments in public art, signage, planting, special events and other, uh, branding opportunities. And then, uh, staying alert and flexible and open to different strategic opportunities downtown. Uh, that might be future site acquisitions as they come available or site assembly opportunities. Uh, next steps after this, uh, work session, if there's any feedback that you have in the meantime, don't let us know or any questions that maybe we didn't answer tonight. Uh, and then we'll bring forward the downtown study along with these recommendations for council's approval and adoption at the October 28th meeting.
So I had some questions about funding. Um, so a couple of things, PCDC and hotel tax. So on the current placemaking efforts and all of those, uh, and there, is that something that hotel tax could support?
So.
Hot tax should be for placemaking.
Yeah, so public art currently, a lot of our public art is funded through, or all of it, sorry, is funded through our hotel tax. Um, and so we can continue to fund public art and, and signage as well, uh, some signage through that.
But not everything under that bullet point could be funded through hot tax. Or that's.
Yeah.
Hotels.
It can support.
A lot of that.
A lot of those.
Yeah. Okay, and then, um, PCDC and, and could, could that be an opportunity to, um, give economic incentives for certain key, uh, locations along the, the streets or having a cohesive outdoor look as far as like, you know, I've seen that in, in other develop, in other cities, and so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. I believe that, that is an option for forty dollars in, in enhancements, and we have seen that in other communities as well, when we think we've ever utilized that here, but I believe that is an option.
Lockhart very much did that.
Well, also, um, I remember back in the day, there were, um, economic incentives for small businesses. I'm not sure if we're still doing it. I haven't seen anything recently with PCDC for some of these smaller, um, uh, retail establishments that maybe could help if they're going, you know, to expand or to do, to improve, to do it in the way that is cohesive, you know, coordinated with that look.
The, the face lifts kind of.
Yeah. Also inside, you know, like I, I think I, I, there was some for like kitchen equipment or whatever to expand, you know, in different. Yeah, I just haven't seen anything, um, recent about that. And also we've been talking about small businesses entrepreneurs, and I think, um, that could be a place where we could help in the downtown is having that, and elsewhere as well, but to, to support small businesses in that way.
Caesar had brought that up years ago, and I think, again, old ideas becoming new again. And, um, that may be something to look at to try to see what we can do regarding grants and allow for glazing and other things that connect our.
Absolutely something we can explore and have conversations with PCDC about.
I think my final question was, um, what costs would be associated with the, um, request for information, if any?
I don't. It could be like public notices. It'd be very, very minimal.
Gotcha, thank you.
What's, what's his line?
Okay. Mayor, that's what we had for you this evening. We're happy to answer any other questions you might have.
All right. Anything else?
No, I just want to thank you for giving us, you know, the, the real look at where we are now and having that roadmap over the short-term and, and long-term. So I appreciate all your work on that.
I'm always fascinated to see how y'all plan for these meetings because you know